So we have an agenda that's been posted Amanda Murray from the township has they've started to have conversations about the small halls festival for this year. There was a meeting last week. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend. I think Melanie was there, but the basically. The township is looking for the board's intentions with regards to the small halls festival. So I'd like to add that. Just before we start talking about the accessibility and renovations, if if that's okay with everybody. So I need a move on a second or to add that to the agenda. Thank you. So.
I'll move.
Thanks. And Tina, I got you seconding. Perfect. Any opposition to that adding that agenda item? Great. Okay. And so then we have two sets of minutes for this for our considerate. Oh, sorry, disclosure of pecuniary interest. Does anybody need to disclose a pecuniary interest for this meeting at this time? Not hearing any. Moving on to our minutes. We have two sets of minutes. One from our special board meeting that was held on the 18th of March and then one for AGM, which was held on the 25th of March. Everyone will recall the 18th of March was the meeting that we had with Terry Vachon. He led. To discuss the accessibility options presented to us from the township. And the other meeting was our AGM where we discussed last year as it was. And so is there any any information there that you've that you've seen that's needs is omitted or needs to be changed? Start with the the 18th minutes. Okay, hearing none. Can I get a mover in a second or for those minutes? Great Karen?
I'm me.
And Melanie, thank you. And all in favor of approving the March 18th minutes? Great. And for the AGM minutes on the 25th, you'd anything that needs to be added or changed, any omissions from that? Hearing none on the mover in a second or for those minutes? Great Lori and Tina and all in favor of the AGM minutes? Great. Okay, perfect. We'll consider those carried. Thank you. So. Moving right along, we will talk about so and Melanie, I'm going to lean on you a little bit here before you because you were actually at the meeting last week. For the small halls festival, but essentially there was a meeting held. And Amanda kind of wanted to get the to get the pulse of the the hall boards into what they feel was. Kind of their commitment. There was a few different options. And of course, it was before everything changed again as of yesterday. The options are to cancel the 2021 Small House Festival, to run a. A car rally, to run a golf tournament. To plan to run the event, I guess, is the other option, hoping that capacity will will be opened up by the end of September. And there was a couple other couple of their options too. So. Melanie, what what if I could ask you to kind of give a to give us a bit of flavor of what the meeting was like? What were the other? What was the other reaction from the other hall boards there?
Um, there wasn't that many of us there. Purple Hills is that is that they did? They opted out. They told us right then and there that they are. The other board said that they would have to just the other members other who said had to take it back to their boards and find out what they wanted to do. I forget who else was there older. Another option was also to have like a 50 50 draw. But it would only be run through St. Hampton because they have the lottery license. So. Like all the money would go to them because they have that raffle or the lottery license. And then they would donate the the rest of the money to the rest of the halls in a sense somehow, however, that is done through the township.
Okay.
I forget who else was there. At the hall at that meeting. It's my first time being there. So it was my first meeting, everybody. So terribly sorry.
No, no, that's okay. No, I'm I'm I realize I'm putting you on the spot a bit and I don't mean to I'm just, you know, just for the hall boards. Just for their information more than anything, and I appreciate that. So. Yeah, I mean, look, it's yeah, we're kind of once again in this in this situation we find ourselves in. I don't know. What people think? I mean, September is a long way from now.
Heritage Society was there, sorry. They were there, and I think they opted out and so did on the green. They have both opted not to participate in the festival this year.
Right? Okay. So the station and the Purple Hills. So the arts festival is not going to happen. Great. Okay. Yeah, I don't know. I know we have some tentative. In in my communications with Amanda, I had said that we have some tentative bookings for later in the year, like November, late November thing. And again, it's all tentative. And I said, I said, I admit like, oh, from a from a ordering standpoint, like even if we. It's way easier for us to run a one off concert than it is to run a festival like this. From an organization standpoint. So I, you know, it's 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 a lot more. It's a lot easier for us to kind of. There's not a lot of planning, I guess, to do really like we would release the tickets. Even if things were were fine, like even. We could probably even release them after Thanksgiving, eh Sarah, and still be and still be fine like. Depending on where numbers are. So that's it. That's I think that's a whole different ballgame. But in terms of like organizing for for something like this, I don't know. It's. And where can like?
We have the option of doing a three day festival like if if the if all the hall boards want to do it, we can either do a three day or we can just do a one day thing. Like that's what. That's what it was aiming towards. And if we're going to do a three day thing, then we've got to let her know. Well, either way, we have to let her know by the 12th whether we're participating, if we are, if we're doing it for three day or the three or if we're opting out. And it's also like if one hall opts out, then everybody's out.
Oh. Okay, thanks. Well, I guess, I mean, yeah, go ahead, Lori.
Sorry, took a minute to unmute. I opt out then. I I think I would just say no.
Yeah. Sarah, did you?
I agree with Lori. I think opting out and I also saw some of the other options. I don't think it's a really great use of staff resources right now. I think that the halls are going to need so much help with upcoming fundraising and that sort of thing. I would love to see. Amanda help us maybe create event and fundraising strategies for the halls that are or, you know, help. The halls brainstorm what programming would look like if they were going to move forward with renovations, that sort of thing. It just seems to me like with all the assistance we need. It might feel like a little bit of a make project right now, but. I I think there's so much that could be done and those resources could be used to really help us with long term goals this year.
Okay, great. Any other comments?
You said the 12th is that April?
Yeah, like Monday.
Well, then I say no.
Yeah.
Enough. There's enough time to even think about it.
Okay.
And traditionally, we don't really do well. You know, we do well in that we support the initiative and that's wonderful and everything, but. It's a lot of time and energy.
Okay. All right, then. Can I get a motion? I'm just reading the room as it is. Can I get a motion that for the evening hall board to not participate in the 2021 Small House Festival from Lori?
I'll second.
A second or thank you, Claire, and all in favor of that one? Great. Okay.
You know, sort of echoing Sarah's sentiments that it's in favor of, you know. Longer term strategies and resources in in better places. Because I think that's really key to it, not that we just aren't interested.
Yeah. Thank you. Great. So we'll consider that passed and Kayla, if you can, please make sure that's noted in the in the minutes for. And I'll and I'll express that to I'll I'll express that to to Amanda too when I respond to her. Great. Thank you, guys. Okay. The next item on the agenda, of course, is our discussion of hall accessibility and renovations. We had our meeting with the township on the 18th and we were presented with the two options we were given. To. Buy the hall for a dollar, which we pretty much said we don't want to do right then and there. I don't. Do we move that? I don't think we did, but. It was it was very much very much unanimous that that was not the feeling of this board to 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 go that way. And the other option was to move or sorry, to renovate the hall with a 75 25 funding agreement. For accessibility and. Fads. Fads updates. So this meeting is to have a bit of a discussion about that and what we feel, what we kind of want to see. Yeah, how do we? Who wants to kick it off?
Okay, Bill, first off.
Go ahead, John. Thank you.
With the fads or the modified fads is does that include? I didn't see your plans, your previous plans. Did that include all your wants, needs? In those documents or is there going to be some stuff on top of that?
So one of the things that I kind of occurred to me afterwards. Fads has never really been explained to me or to this board. What it means, what it is. And and I was sort of hoping for that on the 18th, to be honest. So I don't really know what. You know, I think I think one of the things that. That we need, you know, is is understanding as to what, you know, what are the requirements? Yeah, and I. I think a lot of the things we're talking about kind of go hand in glove with. You know, with. The renovations that were that were proposed back in 2015, 2016. You know, you can't update the washrooms in the evening hall without addressing the septic system. You 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 will never have an accessible kitchen in the evening hall without moving it. The, you know, the day that we, one of the big things that that was discussed. At length by this board and by discussions with community members was. That we wanted to preserve a, you know, the the hall itself, like the look and feel of the of the hall, the stage, the. The wood on the ceiling, you know, the entryway, as well as the bowling alleys in the basement. And some of the work that's been done to. To create, you know, kind of a a recent history, that historical installation in the basement. So those were all things that that, you know, we want. And so with. You know, with with doing a renovation to make sure that the entire hall is accessible. The only real option for that is to is to start building to the east of of what is now. The building, the like the existing building. Because otherwise you start limiting your parking and, you know, it just. Becomes a becomes kind of a nightmare. So. Anyhow, so. The. So that's kind of where we where we we are are where like, I think, as as a board and and I I think that. You know, we need. We need to make sure that that I think we have some some control. And some and definitely we need to have input in the process. We need to have a say as to what is happening. I don't want to see it handed over to. A project manager and and we can't access the site and we can't. You know, talk to the contractors and talk to the architects and the engineers and and those sorts of things. The last time this was, we went through this, like we. We were stick handling the entire. The entire process and right up to right up to when it went to tender. And then, you know, it it got taken away. So or it got it got. Cancelled. So. I I think we I think we were in a pretty good spot before and I'd like to see us get get back there.
Most most of what you said sounded like it was already in the documents in the fads documents or the A O A. Compliance documents that were sent out.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, like, I mean, we don't want a golden escalator or, you know, like there it wasn't anything. You know, we we weren't trying to 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 pull one over on anybody or or to to. To fleece anyone or that sort of thing. It was just a matter of we want the building to look. To look, you know, like it like it does essentially. And to match to kind of match the architecture, the design, but update it. So that so the, you know, so the wheelchairs can go in the washroom so that we have an accessible washroom on the main floor. And that 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 folks who have accessibility issues can get up to up to the main hall on their own, essentially.
My my concern is, and I don't remember back to the original plans, but I think. One of the things I think I remember is that the original plans, we didn't even have an air conditioning. System included in that price. So that was something that still needed to be included. And I think there were a few other things. The prices really skyrocketed from when we first started to now 2019 estimates. And we know how ridiculous everything is now. So our 325,000 that we have to raise. I mean, it could be closer to seven or 800,000. And I I'm personally, I don't think I'm ready to say yes to that much fundraising. That's just me.
Other thoughts?
What was the? So A O D A and what's fads? What? Why is that coming into play now? And then there's modified fads?
Yeah. So Caleb Caleb put a little note in the chat there. So it's facility accessible design standards. And basically, it's it's a. It's a so she says it's a greater standard of accessibility in facilities. It's above the building code. So it's it's a little bit more than. Then the building code requires. And so there's talk of. Maybe not going quite that far with the modified or the hybrid. Models of that. So I don't know what. You know, like if you need a turning circle of one meter for a. A wheelchair, say, for example, in a in a in a washroom stall, I like, I don't know what the the difference would be with fads, whether it would be one, one and a quarter meters or. You know, you know, one and a half meters and what the modified standard would be, to be honest with you. So it's it's, yeah.
I can try and help a little bit. So the fads document is a council approved standard and like Bill said, it is over and above. The building code, which is the base, the the minimum. It is quite higher. I believe Clearview actually won an award for implementing it. When it comes to the fad standards, the actual fads between fads and modified fads. Bad fads, the original document is for a new build. So they're saying when you build a new facility, these are the the. Components that are required, like the water bottle fill station, the gender neutral washrooms, things like that. And then the modified part is more for renovations. And as we got further into this process, we started to realize that. Hey, wait a sec. The modified section of the entire fads document. I mean, it's a it's a pretty large document. And the modified portion is for the renovations, which this falls under because we're not doing a new build. Hopefully, I mean, in some cases it is an option and council has put that on the table as an option. But just when we start to look at that, costs do go substantially lower because again, we're just we're renovating what we already have. We're not tearing it down and doing a complete new build. The hybrid model is kind of a mix between the two. So new components where it's needed, you know, if you need an elevator. Okay, well, then we put in the elevator, but maybe. Up towards the kitchen, it's a ramp or something of the modified. Fads. I don't know. I hope that that helps a little bit.
And another one is the washrooms. You have. Two washrooms in the lower level, but the upper level will be just a coed washroom. Instead of putting a full washroom up there.
Yeah, that was in our that was in our proposal too, from the last. The documents that we had. So we had a gender neutral upstairs washroom, single stall upstairs washroom. With the turning with the turning radius in it. Was what we had. So. Karen?
Okay, couple, couple of questions I had following the last meeting. Including, you know, was there any sense of? Like timeframe if we were committing to a fundraising effort, you know. Over how many years or by when I think would be helpful. And then I think if we had a better sense of that, maybe we as a board could. Determine what our comfort level is. I mean, if we're all in agreement, we want these renovations to happen. But we don't want to be committing to something that we don't feel is feasible. I think we need to give the township some indication of what that number might be. And then, you know, depending on how much more, you know, they're willing to put into that. You know, whether the 25 75 split alters a little bit. Regardless, we're going to get a total sort of project envelope. And I think once we have an awareness of that, it'll be. We may have to face that we might not everything we want. Just given the huge dollars we're looking at and maybe just have a sense of what our priorities are, at least, so that we can come to the table with some suggestions. Those are my thoughts.
Thanks.
We have, we have until, what is it, 2025? Is the provincial standards? Nobody knows what's going to happen. If that date comes along and there's nothing done, nobody knows. They they won't say what's going to happen after that date. And then with the remainder, yeah, once we get down into the nitty gritties. There'll be a loan put out the same as any other loan that you've taken out through the township. It'll be amortized over. Whatever period can be worked out between both parties.
But are they is is the idea, John, that that like it would be? 10 years, 25 years, you know, like. What was the what are the what's the what's the what's the the horizon on that?
I think they were talking 25 years, the way they had it worked out. Because it's going to take. Who knows what's going on? Nobody's going to be able to make. Big money in short periods of time. And that has that hasn't been. Finalized yet neither in council. Until we know what's going on.
So. So, John, what I'm hearing from you then is sort of like this is a multi generational commitment to sort of like we have to make the decision. That we want this, that the facility matters to us as a community and that we are kind of. Committing to short term with the idea that we will create this community around us that will then pick up, like carry the torch. Forward. Is that the vision that council has? For managing this?
Yeah, because this this it's a big deal. Like we're sinking a lot of money into this. So it is going to be multi generational. Events. So you need your community backing that. Once you decide to leave, somebody's going to be there to replace you.
And if not, ultimately, the municipality owns the facility and can dispose of it. Or utilize it however they want, which is true today.
Yeah, yeah. That you need you need a lot of community support because we're talking big dollars to get a lot of these halls renovated.
Yeah, I mean, the 2019, the 2019 projection, I don't have the exact figure in front of me. Just right now, but but it was, you know, 300,000 plus. And like Lori said, you know, that was 2019 numbers. So. So presumably it would be. You know, 15 to 30% more potentially. However. I know that. You know, we do have a pretty good head start. We've we've got, you know, somewhere around 70 to $80,000 in the bank. Right now, and we haven't really, we haven't really been doing fundraising. I do know that there. You know, like, let's be honest, there's 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 no shortage of there's no shortage of. Of money around around our our neck of the township and. And I think that, you know, with the right with the right. Team in place and the right, the right plan, I think we could potentially go out and ask some big donors for things. I think. You know, our area too has certainly proven that it it shows up to events. And our hall especially has we we've shown that we can. We can put on some some big events and and raise some money. So if it was stretched out over. Over time and and I I don't think it's necessarily. You know, an impossible task, but. But that's my opinion. Go ahead, Sarah.
I think it'll be really good that the building is accessible because we'll all be in bloody wheelchairs by the time we're done our last.
The last fundraising event will be my wake.
Yeah, exactly. All donations to.
That's right.
To pay for the renovation.
Phil Hewitt Memorial Accessible Washroom.
I'm not sure that's on me, guys.
Go ahead, Ed.
The when you said the modified fad, so was the. For example, the washroom upstairs, is that a want or is that a requirement?
That's a requirement.
You have to have a washroom upstairs, even though the bottom ones are accessible.
From what I understand, yes.
Okay, no, I'm just wondering what if there's any wants, we can get rid of the wants and maybe we don't need an elevator. You can go with a. On the stairs. So I don't know. I have no, I have no idea how much that would save. There's the ramp that goes to the bowling alley. I think they have somebody said $3,500. And I think you should. That could be tendered out, maybe come in for 500. I can't see a ramp going up four inches or six inches being $3,500. I just. And I think the township said that the township is the reason why the quote is so high. It's a municipality and prices just go extreme.
That's right.
So can the township not wake up and get more bids in to get something changed?
It doesn't. It doesn't matter as long as it's got a township name. Everybody's pretty well in the same ballpark. You put a county name to it or township name to it, everybody just doubles their prices.
We can leave things out of the tender, though, potentially.
Yeah.
Right. So so if we so if we, you know, wanted to have part of our our efforts for fundraising be that we are going to approach. I don't know. We're going to approach a 25 different businesses, for example, to to see if they would they would sponsor. Different different aspects of the of a kitchen renovation to to buy appliances, whatever. You know, then and we had some kind of a donor recognition program. Um, you know, like we could leave that out and then that would just be up to us to, we would, we would find, we would, like you said, I, you know, maybe we'd go and get the, the fall off the, or the whatever, the ding and scratch, uh, refrigerator, commercial refrigerator, rather than getting like the brand new one that comes in, um, through whatever, uh, whatever process that would be involved with a, with a, with a, a kitchen renovator or kitchen contractor. Um, that sort of thing. So, so if we had, if we had some specific things that we, we said, you know, we, we can, we can sort this stuff out ourselves. We want to get the shell up. We want to get the roof on. We want to get, you know, the, the, the major, um, the major systems, uh, the major systems done, and then we're going to go on our own to, you know, do the painting, to do the whatever, um, those sorts of things. Maybe we could work that out, right?
Yeah, that'll all have to be worked out in, and every, yet in the final drafts and everything worked out.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Another kind of question for John around, like, we've been through this process where we've made the commitment. We started the fundraising, Bill spent the time on the drive. We've put a lot of effort into this project before and a huge commitment, um, from the board only to have, um, the political will not be there when the time came for council to, to push forward. So I'm just wondering, is that a possibility this time as well? Like, have you guys said, yeah, it's go time, you guys commit and we're ready? Or is this going to be a long drawn out process again where we will be kind of in limbo with, with council sitting on their hands? Do, do you have a feel for that?
Um, by the time we get all the feedback and everything, we're looking at fall before a final decision comes in.
This, this fall.
Yeah, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be anytime soon. It's gonna be later in the summer and the fall.
And when you're talking feedback, can you tell me some of what you're expecting that to be?
Well, all the halls, all the halls are meeting and then they're gonna send all their feedback to Terry. And then Terry's gonna put another proposal together for council.
Okay. And then what about community feedback? Like one of my key concerns is, um, making the right decision for the community as a whole, which I've always felt is council's decision. I always feel like at this table I sit and I make decisions for us as a hall board and as a community in, like, around the evening hall, you guys to think about the big strategy. So are you guys going to be doing the outreach to the community to understand the community's desire and capacity to take on this, these costs? And if a hall board is not able to come up with this, ultimately the municipality is responsible. So how will you address that?
And, and that's, that's the biggest thing is right now is everybody's trying to figure out how do we put something out to the community to get their involvement because of this COVID? You can't say we're having an evening hall board meeting to discuss the outcome of the evening hall when we can't have a meeting. So you have to have a Zoom meeting, send some flyers out. We have to get the word around to see what, what the community wants. And the biggest problem is how do we get it out to the community to get their feedback?
But what if we've already done that, John?
In evening, we have definitely done that and we, I mean, not around this price tag, but we've done the kind of community work.
I'd, I'd, I'd be really interested to sit down with, uh, to sit down with somebody from Burnside's and get out the drawings from five years ago and say like, okay, what, what's the difference between then and now? And, and what would, what do we have, what has to be changed? What, what would need to, what on this drawing isn't, doesn't comply? And I'm, I'm not trying to be, you know, flippant or anything, but I, I, I would be curious to know. Um, because we, we, we've, I, you know, and I, I feel like evening's in a, in a probably a better spot in a number of ways from a lot of the, from what I've heard from some of the other hall boards, um, that are, you know, I've heard some pretty frank, uh, comments from other hall boards saying they're not fundraisers. They're not, you know, they didn't sign up for this thing. Comments like that have been, have been mentioned, um, when, when, uh, this information has been given to them. Um, and I, I feel like evening hall board is, is, um, you know, like, we don't just want to run into it necessarily, um, but we, we've kind of gone down the road. We've got, we've gone through the process and, um, and I, I feel like, you know, we should, uh, we should be, we should be able to have a discussion about what, what is, what is the possibility of using what we already have? Um, and what would need to be changed on it, um, to, to, to get this done? Um, I feel like it's a good plan and, and, uh, it, it, you know, needs, or it warrants being looked at, seriously. And I think that sets us apart.
Yeah, you spent some time getting those plans ready and that now.
Almost a year.
Yeah, Burnside's trying to change that. So those are questions that you'd have to ask Terry and Burnside's. You know those plans. I haven't seen those plans. You know those plans, what you have drawn up on them. So you need to try to set up a meeting with Terry and Burnside's.
Well, presumably Terry and Burnside's have seen them too, because I know there's a copy at the township and I know there's a copy at Burnside's because they drew the plans. So, you know, um, anyhow, um, the other, the other kind of side of that too, I think that evening has a bit of a, a, a leg up on some of the other, some of the other hall boards is that we have some, we have some folks, some community members who are willing to be part of a, of a fundraising committee to, to, um, to go ahead with this. Um, and I, you know, we could, we could establish a, we could establish a fundraising committee, I think even tonight, um, to, uh, to start to explore, start to explore that. Um, you know, what it would take to get, to get to the numbers were, that are proposed. Um, so, uh, anyhow, uh, we lost, oh, Karen went dark. Um, so, uh, I don't know what people think about, people think about that. I know like Carol Whitley in the past has, has said she would be willing to come and, come back and help out with, uh, with, with this kind of thing. Um, Trina's committed. Um, you know, so it wouldn't necessarily be, I think it would be a, be a, a larger team effort. Um, and two, we've, we've, we're starting, we, well, before the pandemic, we were starting to really kind of develop a, quite a roster of, uh, of larger volunteers. And we do have some new community members as well, like, you know, there's younger families in, in, in evening, in evening now. And, and, and so maybe we could, we could reach out to them and, and, uh, you know, try and get some of those folks involved too. Okay. So, a million dollar or maybe not quite the million dollar question, but go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, like you had mentioned earlier, your one comment was that two of you received an award. Did that mean they, they're, um, the rules they put into this AODA was more stringent than any other community? So now they're responsible for us having to spend all this extra money because their rules are higher than what needs to be?
Yes, no, I'm not sure that it was an exact award, but they did, uh, receive recognition on implementing the, uh, fads document. And you are correct, it is, uh, quite stringent and more so than many communities within our area.
So.
That's all I got for you, Ed.
Can it get removed and one put in that's softer to make this, this whole community save?
I think that's a question for John, Ed.
John?
That's, that's, that's why we're creating this, uh, modified fads and, uh, the hybrid fads. So we're lower, we're lower than the top standards.
So you can make your own rules?
No.
Well, you.
Their council.
AODA.
AODA, then don't go above AODA, stop there. And then we can maybe, financially, the halls can have this process completed.
Between the, between the building codes and fads and the AODA combined, where the hybrid fads is right at the bottom level.
And that's what the standards are that we're being, the renovations you're coming to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like the price.
Understand all this and it's not.
Yeah, the prices that are set out there for the, the high end. But now we're trying to work down to the modified fads and implementing a hybrid fad to get them lowered down to the bottom end of the AODA compliance.
Okay. You okay, Ed?
Yeah, I guess.
All right. Okay, so, um, all right. So where, what do, what do people think? Do we, are we, um, you thinking we should, we should push ahead? Should we, do we need more information from, uh, from Terry or, uh? How do you, what do people feel?
You need the community?
Pardon me, John?
You need to go back out to the community or you figure you got enough support without advertising for their input now?
What do people think? Go ahead, Ed.
Can the township confirm that they're going to be able to go seventy five, twenty five?
That's what they've given us. That was the proposal.
Okay, so if we accept, we just got to be able to figure out what kind of fundraising we can handle?
Yep.
I, I thought that seventy five, twenty five was just a proposal. It had not been approved.
No, that's just.
Maybe I misunderstood.
So if we agree and they come back and say, oh no, we're gonna change it to sixty forty. Is that a possibility, John? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Kayla.
No, I was just gonna, uh, say exactly what Claire was kind of on. Uh, it is a proposal, so they're, uh, suggesting this as a starting point to move forward. Uh, if every hall board took one of the options, there still might be areas where they have to go back to that drawing table. I mean, there's, uh, some options. I'm not sure if you've looked through all the other hall board options that are available online. Uh, some of them are tear down a whole building and rebuild and it's, you know, seventy five, twenty five percent. So I mean, if all the hall boards say, uh, hey, we're passing a motion to recommend that council continue with the modified fads or the fads hybrid or brand new building or what have you, they're still gonna have to come back to the table and say, okay, so we've got everybody's ideas of where they are at and what they're willing to move towards. Now, how do we finance that? We're gonna have to come back to them. So again, it is a proposal and it's just a starting point. It's really still kind of cloudy.
I think it's a bit unclear to me then what's expected of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we just gonna list a whole bunch of things that, you know, we agree with in principle or that we want to put forward and, and that's it or?
So it's my understanding that Terry does want to see what is it that you guys want? What is it that you guys are willing to work towards? The, the options that have been proposed are from council that said, they're saying basically, hey, these are the options that we are willing to work towards. Now, kind of like counter offer, what are you guys willing to work towards? What is, what is your commitment level? What's your, you know, maybe surrounding community commitment level? Um, there's so many questions like, like Terry mentioned in the presentation.
So this, this offer is somewhat irrelevant. We're at the, we're at the, we're at the table now. We can't just say, yeah, we want to do twenty five, seventy five and let's go. We have to then come back with all kinds of details. Is that what you're seeing, Kayla?
Well, essentially, I mean, they don't have all the, the details, right, Sarah? They, they've provided, um, I'm looking at the, the PowerPoint presentation that Terry provided here. So it kind of looks like I'm looking off screen. Um, but even if you look at the fire suppression system, that's, that's a approximate quote. That wasn't actually, uh, a solidified quote from.
The twenty thousand dollar one?
I, I understand that. And I understand that this, like, the build and the renovations, that's all a moving target. We all know that those things are gonna shift and change. But what I think we need to really determine right now is what is the commitment of the municipality? And what is the commitment of the board? And go from there, because if we're twenty five percent in and they're seventy five percent in and we are ready to move, then let's do it. But if it's going to be a back and forth again, I'd like to actually understand what is council absolutely willing to commit to? Because I don't want to spend a ton of time doing this again. I don't know.
Well, and get it diving too down, diving too far down into details like and, and rabbit holes and, and figuring out, oh, we need to make the washroom this big or that big, like, 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 if we can, and that's, that's kind of what I, what I, where I'm at too, Sarah, like if, if, if we're able to, if we're able to say like, you know, yeah, like over, over the next whatever many years, we'll commit to, we'll commit to raising, to raising money to get this done. Um, but can we, do we have a starting point? Do we have a, do we have drawings that are workable? Or are we starting like from scratch? Um, I, I'm, I'm hopeful we're not because then, because that, that changes the whole, the whole thing. Like if we need to, if we need to reimagine, you know, everything and go, and then we gotta go back out to the community, John. And, and I'm sorry, Kayla, I cut you off, but, but, um, you know, like, like, yeah. So I, I think that's, there's a few things, a few caveats there, I guess.
So I mean, there's twelve options that Terry provided is like possibilities and one of them is other. So he is looking kind of, hey, this is what council was willing to propose to start this conversation and open it up. I, I believe that council would yes, be willing to do what they say, which is the twenty five percent commitment to the hall board. However, one of those options in the twelve options is other. So they're happy to entertain anything that, that you guys might have. You might have other ideas. I remember one hall board came out and said, uh, hey, because of the tendering process, what if we sell the, what if we buy the hall board or sorry, buy the hall from you? We'll go out and do the renovations and sell it back to you so that we don't have to go through the tender process. So we can kind of finagle our way around. And, you know, that's, that's something that the township never thought of. So it is a starting point and, um, a-again, it's, it's completely up to the board, but I think at the end of the day, Terry wants a sense of, uh, hey, we would recommend continuing with the, the modified fads or the hybrid. Or, you know, we absolutely don't want to buy the building outright because whatever reasons. But I think he is looking to start moving some of those twelve options off of the table, if that makes sense. I hope I'm doing Terry justice.
Well, I think.
Well, we'll find out.
Terry had to do Terry justice, we're trying to make, like, it seems like there's, it, you know, I thought we, we had two options. And that they were sort of, when I read two options, I look at them and I say, I've been given these two choices. And I would like to pick A, B, or none of the above is kind of the way I, I was looking at what we were given. So, um, I, I just find that really interesting.
And that's, and that's where you come into the other. Send, send your options back for us to look at. Like that one, that one hall that suggested that they buy it, do the renovations and then sell it back. You take the township equation out of there, your price just dropped in half.
Your liability, your organization, that's, anyway, it's a lot, but, um.
Yeah.
And a lot more commitment to oversee everything yourself.
Yeah.
But those are options.
But they weren't the options put forward to us.
Yeah.
No, and that's why.
Yeah.
That's why there's the others. We're looking for your input, your suggestions. The bargaining table just opened up. Now it's time to start bargaining.
I would really like your professional staff to help us understand this a little bit better. Like I really, I understand that we're here to advocate for the community and the project.
I would really like your professional staff to help us understand this a little bit better like I really I understand that we're here to advocate for the community and the project. But um, I really would love. You know? More guidance from your professional staff on this.
Another another hall asked to have a meeting with Terry. And go through. Step line by line. With what he proposed and what's on the uh. On the modified fads documents. Get him to explain line by line of what. He's proposing.
Okay.
In that way, they better understanding of what he. Has.
I thought that uh council wanted an answer. For the May meeting from us. Or for a a meeting in May.
I believe. Are they not looking for an answer of whether we're going to commit?
Yeah.
Um. But I feel that 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 if if we. Vote to commit. The percentage could change or there could be other changes depending on how many halls actually we're going to. Uh, participate in this. Hand handout. It's not really a handout, but in the funding.
And and your feedback and suggestions, what you would like. Your options.
Okay. Well, what do we think, folks? Like? Do we are we? John, are we are we expected like our next meeting at like where isn't till the twentieth of May? Um, so presumably you're gonna have your council meeting. Before then, where you're taking all this information in. Um. I guess we've got a we've got a kind of make a a bit of a decision tonight. Um. You know?
Yeah, I think I think Terry was hoping to get something back by the. Second. Our second meeting in May. He was hoping to get some sort of report back.
Right.
So I guess the question. The question is if we want to continue to explore this idea or if we're just done. Is that the question that we should be asking ourselves at this point?
Just on what? What was that?
Sorry, Karen?
Sorry, or just done?
Like, we're just done like we're out like we don't wanna we're we're like meh neither of the options put in front of us work. Is one scenario. The second scenario is that we continue to talk to the municipality about the options. That's where I see we're at right now. Is that? Does that make sense to everybody? Those are kind of our two options right now?
Go ahead, Laurie.
Honesty that Sarah, but I think. Like, I don't think that's. I don't think they just want to hear that from us. I think they want to hear we don't like the options that we have. This is the option we are proposing. I don't know if they want to accept from us. Yeah, we're not happy with these two. What else do you have to offer?
And that's. That's what we're looking for.
Sorry, I apologize if that sounds.
Another option.
Yeah, so I apologize if that sounds too smug, but what I'm saying is like we're at this point, the decision is whether we want to to continue or not continue with this process. And that that we know that the process includes a conversation where we're where we're actively engaged with staff to create a plan that's workable for the municipality and the hall board, right? I guess that's that's the decision we would have to make tonight. John, is that what you're? Kind of thinking?
Not really. Make make a counter offer that you guys are committed. Evening evening's hall is a busy hall. It's gonna succeed. Um, it's just getting down to the nitty gritty of. What we can get the numbers down to. What that everybody is happy with.
I mean, I'd be prepared to put forward this statement that, yes, we're we're committed to. Contributing. Via fundraising to make the necessary improvements. And knowing there'll be a whole series of other steps afterwards where we talk about. What our thresholds are and what timelines might look like and what our community evening specific would see. Um, you know, value for the dollar like all of that still needs to be addressed, but. Tonight, I I'd feel comfortable putting forward that we want to at least take the first step in that.
Okay.
Is there any?
Karen.
Sorry, Claire.
I agree with Karen.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got a motion then.
Is there any other options that you want to throw in there? Or other that you want to suggest to Perry?
What about one hundred percent funding from the municipality? I love that option. Like, that's why I think it needs to be a really well considered plan with the help of staff. You know, I think that this collaboration is the way to go up as opposed to offers and counter offers. We're a team all.
Yeah.
For the community and this idea of offers and counter offers seems um.
Adversarial.
It it seems adversarial when we're all on the same team and I just I don't understand that, so I would love to collaborate as opposed to counter offer and.
Well, and maybe I should clarify. It's not really. A counter proposal. That's the first words that came to my mind. We're absolutely a team. We're absolutely working forward together, but the council really needs to know what this board's commitment level is and. Do you see value in moving forward? I think that's really what they want. Um, a few of my motions that have been created and passed so far are similar to. Uh, be it resolved that. Whatever, uh, insert hall board, uh, hereby recommend moving forward with. Uh, modified or hybrid fads. That's it. Simple. We're moving forward. We're in a direction. This is a long process. It's a long road. By no means is that resolution exhaustive. It just simply states, hey, look. Our hall board's worth it and we want to continue moving forward. We don't want to buy back the the hall. We don't like that option. We would prefer the modified or hybrid fads. So I apologize for my misplacement of words.
No, that's good.
No, no, that's okay. The um. No, I mean, uh, I I don't think it's your fault, Kayla, and thank you for for clearing that up. I think that's the most concise uh. Version we've heard uh. Throughout this whole process. So. Is the evening hall worth it?
I think so.
As as Kayla said, uh, so the um, I think that I think that um. That Claire and Karen have have kind of have got a motion uh on the table to move ahead with the with the first option that was proposed to us. Um, in from Terry um to 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 continue to to with discussions. I think um. Personally, I'd like to see um. I'd like to see in there that uh we would like to explore um with the township staff and uh and Burnside's um. The the uh. What am I trying to say? That that we would like to explore the option or like to explore uh the the previous renovation document with and comparing it with the 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 standards to see if that's a possibility.
I'd second that.
Because then it puts us way further ahead in the process too, right?
Um, and every decision we make from here on in is going to require a lot more information, so these are sorts of information gathering exercises I think we need to do as as soon as we can.
Yeah. Okay. So we are willing to move forward with the first option that was proposed to us, exploring the possibility of using existing evening hall. Um. The evening hall uh renovation proposal from. I can't remember the year, twenty sixteen. I think it was twenty fifteen, maybe. The previous evening hall renovation proposal. Any? Any questions about that? Claire, are you still good with that as a seconder?
Yes.
Thank you. So that's our motion. Any further discussion on that?
No.
All in favor? And opposed? Great. Okay, so there we go. We have an answer for the start of a conversation, I guess. And uh, I would I would like to propose um. That we that we start to think about um. Start to think about a fundraising uh a fundraising committee. Um, and I I. I I did kind of put it out that we could that we could potentially uh strike a committee tonight. Um, don't necessarily staff it um or put appoint people to it. Um, but um, I know I've had I've had some conversations um with people and and uh. And I I feel like there is, you know, there is some some willingness to to. To support a project like this to get some some big financial support. And I think we could, if we started to kind of organize, we could uh. You know, we could um. Make a list of people and start to start to even ask for money. Sooner than later. Um, I don't know how uh. You know, whether that would happen. I'm not saying it would happen necessarily next week or anything like that, but but maybe if, you know, if we had. If we had kind of a fundraising sketch, a fundraising plan set up um through the next couple of months, then once we got official approval from from council, if that were to come in. Late summer, early fall kind of thing, could maybe roll that out pretty quickly after that. Um, so is that something people are? Think is a good idea or should we mull it over till the next meeting?
Instead.
I think it's a good.
Sorry, who wants to go for who wants to go first, Melanie or John?
Go ahead, Mel.
I'll go. I just. Oh, thanks. I just said I think that would be a good idea. Because then that way you're getting other people's input, right, from the community as well?
Okay.
I I also think um. I also think that if we were in a position where we um had a bit of a strategy and we had maybe even we were able to reach out to some people that we think might be larger capital donors. Then if we have that in place when decision making time comes for council, that would really um. It would help us. Understand our mandate and the community's willingness and it would help the the township um understand the community's willingness. As well. So I I do think there's a lot of value in um getting going, even even if it's like pledges, um, that sort of thing. Um, I I do think it's really helpful for those two reasons.
I agree.
That's what I was gonna say. Instead of instead of collecting the money now, can you get um pledges or um?
Yeah.
Somebody. Somebody getting something in writing that. They will donate.
Is that what you're talking about, like a adversary note?
It's a pledge. I mean, it's it's fundraising all the time, which says if this moves forward, I will cut the check.
Yeah.
It happens all the time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that way that way you have you have the monies, but you don't, but you have the commitment.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so maybe what we'll do is um, let's let's strike the committee. Tonight, if that's okay, and then we will um. We will come back at our next meeting with um. With some folks to uh like maybe maybe we can between now and then, if all the hall board members can work to, maybe we can try and approach some people about potentially. Finding a chair for that committee or whether it's one of the hall board members or whether it's a community member um and uh who's willing to help out, who's not sitting on the hall board currently and um kind of to 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 sort of get that. Get that process rolling at least and and start brainstorming and making some plans.
Could we write up a little kind of um job description for the chair, maybe Bill?
Yeah, do you want to take us a stab at that?
Yeah, I'll take a stab at that because I think it's helpful if it's clear. Um, and then we could just circulate that around.
Sure. Yeah, and if we and if we have some, I mean, obviously we won't be able to approve um to approve a job description before the next meeting, but if we had some, you know, some some kind of uh. Like some language that, you know, we could say to somebody like, look, here's sort of what we're thinking, you know, the plan is to for it to get to get approved at the next meeting and then uh and then kind of work from there. Um.
Just so if we are out. Um, trying to recruit, at least we're all on the same page in terms of what we're asking.
Right. Okay, all right. So do we can we get a motion to um establish a fundraising committee um for the renovation project? Okay, Melanie? And a seconder? Thank you, Karen. Uh, all in favor of establishing that fundraising committee? Great. Okay, perfect.
Sorry. To be a bit. I've been stung with the recruitment before. Um. So I just want to make sure that we like so all of us can just go and ask people or you as the chair, should we put forward ideas of?
So the idea like my my thought is that um. Is that uh like we didn't put a number on the committee. Um, we, I think I think let's uh, we've established at this point that we want to create a fundraising committee. Let's go and talk to people and then see what kind of reaction we get by the next meeting about people who want. Um, I think at this point, a fundraising committee. Uh, or a fundraising effort is gonna have a few different um, a few different prongs to it. It's gonna have a a a um, like a a direct um, large donation, direct ask. It might have a corporate um, ask uh component to it as well as. Things like running events um at the hall um to to large events at the hall um to to raise money. So um, you know, so someone who's the chair would not necessarily maybe run all those things, but but would be someone who is uh working, working with volunteers and and maybe the, you know, maybe we just know some people who are really well connected within the community who are more than willing to do a. Letter writing campaign and go out and talk to talk to people when they can leave their homes and uh and uh ask them, you know, ask them if they'd like to to support the evening hall, that kind of thing. Um, and maybe or maybe it's, you know. They want to be they want to be the one to go out and ask local businesses, local um, local enterprise to to participate in in uh. In helping at the evening hall, whatever that is. And that could give us some in some information too, like if we've got, you know, I don't know. If we've got a really friendly septic system contractor who's willing to. Put in our septic system for us at a at a really great rate, maybe we don't put that in the tender, maybe, you know, that's that's part of uh. Part of the fundraising campaign too, right? I'm obviously just thinking out loud, but. And being hypothetical. Yeah, with with no commitment on, but like, please don't feel that, you know, if you. Everybody has to come back with two names, you know, kind of thing on May twentieth, but uh but if you've got, if you got some names or if you've got some ideas, feel free to start to start asking people. Okay.
Okay.
Oh, uh, it's just I sorry, just saw a hand go up. Tina or is that it, Ed? Go ahead.
Just based on the modified fads and if. Evening has to do twenty five percent. That's three hundred and fifty thousand.
Over thirty years.
Pardon?
Over thirty years.
Thirty.
And it would be more than that. That was that's two thousand and nineteen prices, so.
No, that's twenty twenty one.
All right.
Kind of give us an idea what's what we're up against.
Yeah.
Right.
And I don't think it should be that. We're just gonna have to. Chop in the pencils. For every dollar we can knock off, we get twenty five cents less ourselves.
There you go.
Like with Bill, you can, there's got to be ways.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. So uh, our next meeting is scheduled for May the twentieth. Does that sound okay for everybody?
Yeah.
Great.
That looked okay.
We should still be not.
Put it in my yeah, we might still be, that's right. All right. Okay, so uh, motion to adjourn. Thank you, Tina and a seconder Melanie. Great. Thanks, everybody.